Proposed lifespan of any tower, so typically met towers in many cases are temporary improvements and they may only be have a lifespan of one to two years. So you'd want to know that, so if you have a special land use permit, you could condition it on the lifespan of the tower, so you don't have a tower sitting there. It would have to submit all general application materials required for a special land use permit, including a site plan. It would have to have a security plan, including methods to prevent climbing, decommissioning plan to essentially, you know, once the met tower is done, to remove it and put it, put the land in a state that is substantially similar as before the improvement. The reason why you don't use the same before the improvement is, I think it would be an absurd reading, but you could say, well, if it says the same, it would have to be the exact same dirt that was removed, that needs to be put there, that's not feasible. Lighting plan, they'd have to describe the lighting on a met tower and any other information deemed by the planning commission to be reasonable or related. Probably more importantly, down the bottom with thirty-four, going on to thirty-five, thirteen for the public, is the setbacks for a met tower. Basically, no part of a met tower may be closer than four hundred feet or two hundred percent of met tower height, whichever is greater to any habitable structure or property line. Public roadways, this mirrors this roadway setback for your wind energy facilities. SLUP limitation, this is something brought up by the member of the public on page thirty-five, thirty-five, a period issue, but they, you know, essentially it says that the planning commission can limit the duration of special land use permit to facilitate removal of the tower after data collection. So a met tower is generally to collect data related to wind speed. And going on to the last section, met towers would only be allowed in that utility, wind energy utility area, and they should be, they would be exempt from any zoning ordinance requirement prohibiting two principal uses on a property. So typically in zoning, you can make the argument that if you have a principal land use such as a, you know, farm, you can't have two principal land uses, a farm and a met tower, it would be waived. But again, remember, this is subject to the special land use permit and site plan review, which has many discretionary standards. And just because, you know, you meet all of these requirements, it's cited in a potentially inappropriate location, then you could deny the met tower. Those are the changes that I've made to the ordinance. I believe those are consistent with what was discussed at the March meeting and I was directed to make. I'm happy to answer any questions about the ordinance from the planning commission or assist with any questions.
Okay, thank you Kyle. Any questions or comments amongst the planning commission?
Is that a defined term in the ordinance?
No, but it was, it used to be in N along with wind energy facility and now it's on.
Yes, okay, okay, I understand the question. So the first draft was ordinance defined wind energy facility using two defined terms, a wind energy conversion facility, I believe, and a wind energy facility. To consolidate the terms, you typically don't want to define a land use using the same words, two different same words, you want to use one word. And that's what I did. So I removed that, essentially removed the alternate definition for wind energy facility and I left it. Wind energy facility means generally wind project in its common terms. So turbines, collection lines, there's a substation, laydown yard, the ultimate land use.
Any other questions or comments?
Are we on E, what, E on the agenda for consideration proposed ordinance? Is this the time where I'm going to discuss that? I mean, are there any possibilities, things we'd want to change? I guess I would feel comfortable in asking the planning commission to consider taking what we heard tonight about Winfield Lake. The setback, we've been said from the water's edge, and I know that's what we have in our policy and that's what we were talking about. I guess I hadn't thought about that from the terms of where your property line is. When we talk about property lines on all of our other wind terminals, we're saying one point five from the property line, one point one from the road. It makes sense to me that we continue that would be property line, instead of a half a mile from the water's edge, it would be a half a mile from the property line. Because I understand what you're saying, it doesn't make it closer to their house. We've been talking about safety and listening, looking at all the research we have on, from property lines and what, two times from the house. It just makes sense to me that that would be continued, the same type of language we've always been talking about from the property line, instead of the water's edge. Does that make sense to anybody else or am I way off on dates?
No, it does George, I agree.
You know, I think we should move that to, so it would be a half, half a mile from the property line, not the water's edge. It just seems like that goes in mine.
We're at on the same time, George. We're at on it. Where would you reword it?
I think you would want to reword it on page twenty-five.
Whatever talks about being a...
At least a half mile from the property line of a property bordering Winfield Lake.
Term be used from lakeside residential.
Lakeside residential is only just near, so that it would measure it from the edge of the zoning.
That's not the property.
Correct, no, it would be from the edge of the zoning if you did that. Just to clarify for George, so it would, there's the lake setback, which would apply from the water's edge, and then there would be a non-participating setback, because those properties potentially could be subject to, understanding that the lake setback is larger. So you could definitely do it from the, from the, basically the property line of a property bordering Winfield, Winfield Lake. However, just know that, you know, you have two setbacks interacting with each other.
Explain that, I don't understand that.
So if a property, let's say the properties on Winfield Lake, they're non-participating, well, they likely would be because I think the zoning. But they potentially couldn't. They would have a non-participating property line setback.
Which would be?
Which would be, let's, leave us one and a half minutes, thirteen, twenty.
From where?
From the edge of their property line.
Okay.
And then there would be an exclusion of any turbines a half mile from the water's edge of the lake. So those districts would fall within each other, presumably, presumably, the one and a half time setback would be.
Maple Valley has one mile from property line.
That's enough ma'am, thank you.
So it's, you know, it's, at that point, it's a policy decision, well, what the, a member of the public said, it's a policy decision. But how it works here is you have a non-participating setback that turned back in us, and then you could also have a setback from the lake. So just know that there's two setbacks working with each other. You can make that setback from the lake based on a property that borders the lake. But know that there would still be a non-participating setback too. So likely, if you, if you start the line from the property line, it will be a larger, that half mile will presumably be larger, and it'll change over time if people split, towns combine lots of people. So it'd be a bigger setback. What I'm trying to explain is that one and a half also applies, you know, a property could have two setbacks applied to it, which could be different setbacks.
Whatever the largest is.
The water's edge, because that's consistent, that's why they want to pull it from there?
I think, well, I don't know if, I don't know if that's the reasoning or not, I think someone just suggested it, and that's what he wanted. So it's really, that's really a decision.
There's actually two setbacks. Do you still have your non-participating setback?
Go with whatever's the largest.
One may be larger than the other.
Exactly.
One has to be larger.
One and a half may be larger than.
It's not, it's not gonna be.
It could be, I just, I don't, you know.
A half a mile is over twenty-six hundred feet, it's not gonna be larger.
Maple Valley is on the other side of the lake and made it one mile from the property line.
That's enough ma'am, we heard you before.
Why did it do a...
Maybe you ought to go home.
Maybe you should listen.
Why the larger gap around Indian Lake but not Winfield? They don't matter if they're...
Ma'am, we're deliberating right now, thank you. As far as the, I don't know if George, if we're gonna hit, you know, it might be two separate lines, I don't know if they're... With the, with the property line. I almost think the half mile might be further away than property line.
The half mile from the water's edge?
A half mile from the property line would be farther.
Yeah, no matter what.
No matter what. But that's the line, I mean.
I mean, it would be easier to take, leave it as water edge and just increase the distance, or, because the property line is going to be jagged unless it's a, it's a consistent circle. Or is that water's edge going to be more consistent?
Is it lake circular?
Increase the distance a little farther or something.
It looks like that rural residential, I think, is only on the north side of the lake.
Right.
I wonder if it's all going from that boundary, but it's not around the whole lake.
It's not around the whole lake.
I don't know if that made a difference, but it just made me think about that, that we were always talking property lines. I just thought maybe that makes it simpler, it's from a half mile from the property line rather than the water's edge, but if it doesn't make any difference, it doesn't matter, but.
You're saying from a property line of, somebody that's on the lake?
Yeah.
Of a lake, of a water's edge of the lake, or?
No.
From a property line of, this is property, I don't know, I think that's what you're saying right there.
That's kind of what I, that's what I'm asking, I guess I'm not, I'm just trying to make sure to get everybody's input, because I don't know if I'm correct with what I'm assuming there, looking at. But that's what I was thinking, is wherever your property line is, it's a half a mile away from that property line on the lake, we were talking property lines on that. Or other setbacks, instead of water's edge, but it, maybe it doesn't make any difference, I just wanted to throw that out, make sure that we thought about it.
Depends on where your lot is, or, you know, if you're across the road from the lake.
Make a pretty big difference if you're across the road, because it was, I mean, if you're across the road from the, I mean, kind of, for Winfield Lake, a lot of the houses on the, on this side are on that side of the lake. You know, they're not right on the lot.
Our properties are deep into the water, there's...
So that would, that would affect when the lake is actually...
You basically could add either one and whichever is greater.
That's a great idea.
From the property line, I think, has to be greater. It's just going to, it's not just, it'll probably end up in, you know, kind of jagged instead of a circle.
Our lake isn't circling, exactly.
Both water lines are jagged.
I mean, I think that's clear cut, everybody knows where their property line is.
Yes.
He's right, we want property line and everything else, so.
I don't, I don't see making a lot of difference in the whole ordinance, that's what we're talking about, trying to, our job is not to say whether we had wind turbines or not. Our job would say if they're going to be, let's have an ordinance that we try to make livable and reasonable and safe for the whole township. I know you won't agree, that's what we've been doing, but we really have, contrary to your thoughts.
You want to make your motion, George?
Well, I want to make sure that we all knew what we were talking about before we make a motion that we regret later.
But, any questions? But now George, we haven't been doing anything from property lines. I mean, on K, with the setbacks, we got from a habitable structure.
Yeah, two times from a house, two times the height from the house, and we went one and a half from the property line.
But, so I'm, I'm saying, we aren't being consistent yet. And that's something that they, they said they don't like either, that it should be from the property line. So I, you know, if we're gonna be consistent, it should all be from the property line.
Amen, Ken.
Well, and you and I probably disagree on that part. I agreed to that before, I agree it should be property lines, but my thought was it should be one and a half, not two from the property line. And everything be one and a half from the property line. And forget that thing from the property line to the house, because I don't think that makes any difference, but we've already talked about that issue and...
Well, the other thing about not going from the property line, like it was brought up, a habitable structure, I mean, I, you know, does that include something that has animals in it? So. It is in the definition, Ken. Well, it does include it.
Primarily used for, habitable, habitable structure.
Habitable structures, as it is defined by Kyle, is on page six of your red line, or not your red line, of the ordinance, top left. Any structure primarily used for living or business purposes by humans, which includes but is not limited to working, sleeping, eating, cooking, recreation, office use, or combination thereof. A structure primarily used for storage incidental to a land use, or a structure that is only incidentally used or not intended for use by humans, should not be considered, or shall not be considered, a habitable structure. So if you're talking about, you know, you know, let's say you have a, like a chicken coop. I would say, no, that's not a habitable structure. If it's mostly, the use is primarily good for animals and people may be in and out of there, then no.
Would it be possible to just, I mean, you're talking about a half mile from Winfield Lake. To add to that number, half miles, what, twenty-six, forty, I believe it is, to, would that make it simple for the wording, is what I'm saying, or the, to make that circle that much bigger to three thousand, three thousand five hundred feet? I, I don't know, would that work?
That's what I'm wondering, to keep that water's edge, they increase the number, you know, three quarters of a mile.
That's still from the water's edge, yeah.
No.
I don't know, but that makes sense.
Yeah, I don't know either, I guess that's my, my information or film on that, which would be, I get, my point is that I understand the concern of wanting a little further away from the house than the water's edge. I can understand that, and it seems like, yeah, adding distance to it, or saying from their property line, I don't think it's gonna make that much difference. Whatever we, the majority of think would work in our, in the language of our ordinance.
Yeah, I think you could go either way on it.
In writing it, does that confuse the issue, Kyle, or should we went?
So, it's, it's, it's like... It's slightly easier to write it in a way that you say, let's say, three quarters of a mile, because when you say, let's say if you want to do it from property line, which I think we can do it. What we want to do is, are at least one half mile from the property line of property, see, it's like, of the property line, of the property line, of the, of the water from property on, on. So you'd want to say, are at least a half mile from the property line of the properties closest to the water's edge to Winfield Lake and other. Well, no, it wouldn't, because you would, you want, you want to use closest here, because you want to use whatever property is closest to the lake. Because there may be property that is...
No.
That's what I mean, so it would start in property and not in lake.
Yes.
The property, can you...
Yes. Well, no, because if they're the same parcel, if they're the same parcel, it would apply from the furthest edge of that parcel. So let's say, you know, there's, there's many lakes and properties where you have the road in between, and then you have people on the property on the lake. It would start from, if I understand the audience correctly, you'd want to start it from the, furthest property line away from the lake.
Yes. Yeah, and that's what I would think, is a half a mile from the further property edge.
So even though there's a road in between, you'd actually start it from the back side of that park?
You would, yes, yeah.
Because they, they actually own to that water front, even though.
And others say it would continue, it would change, it would be constant, be subject to any change if there's parcel splits, combination, that would impact that further property line. That's probably why it's, it's so better, in this particular case, it's better to, or it's easier, I shouldn't say it's better. It's easier to write it as a straight up, a straight number from the lake, because the lake boundaries won't particularly change. But again, I'll leave it to you guys, what you think is better.
Seems less complicated to write that, but maybe they just lengthen distance here.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Three thousand, I mean, yeah, I'd go like thirty-five hundred or three. He said three quarters of a mile.
Three quarters of a mile.
Three quarters of a mile.
From the water's edge.
Why? Why you have a property line?
Our properties are deep into the water's edge, go back to my property, go from there, like everything else.
Either way, we're making it bigger. So we just need to decide which, if we want it written complicated, I mean, either way, we're trying to make it bigger. Either way, it's probably gonna work out.
Well, I'll make a motion. To increase the distance around the lake to three quarters of a mile from property, or I'm sorry, from the lake's edge.
I'm saying.
Okay, we had a motion and a second to amend the setback around Winfield Lake to three quarters of a mile from the water's edge. All those in papers, say aye. Pose. Motion carried.
Chris, I'd like to just make an observation about something that came up at our last meeting regarding how these look and what impact that has on this ordinance. A comment was made that it shouldn't matter at all, and when that was made, I was really taken back, and I went back and I looked in our ordinance book and it seems like there's many ordinances in this book that are, you know, that address, I mean, it's all about how things look. Then there are ordinances that don't have the impact on how something looks. I mean, we have an ordinance that limits the size of a fence in a front yard, more than the side yard. There's only one reason for that, looks. We've got our sign ordinance, I talked to Russ, who owns the Amblin, he'd love to put a sign on top of his building. Township won't let him. There's only one reason for that, looks. Same with billboards. And it's just, it's not consistent to do, to not address that with this ordinance, with the whole book. And the same with not having a height limitation. For it to just be left to the setback restrictions, it's a bad idea. I hope that, the talking we heard tonight, the people, that I hope we will get this a little closer and go, you know, we are polarizing this community. And it doesn't have to be that way. We can still get some turbines. Not everybody's gonna be happy. In fact, like I said, I think the best ordinance is gonna be one where most, nobody is happy. But the way it is now, it's an extreme that I hope we think they're for love.
Is important, for the visual aesthetics of it, but also it forces the engineering of the wind towers to become more efficient. Get more out of the less, it'll force that. If you allow them a little bigger, they will.
And the idea that we might make this a little more difficult for the developer, I mean, if that's what anybody's thinking, I mean, we're supposed to be writing this for the township, not for the developer.
All right, thanks for your opinion. You know, we talked about that a lot at our last meeting. I mean, it is a million dollar question. The taller ones are, produce more power. If we have more, taller turbines, we're gonna have less of them. Less turbines is, from what I'm hearing out in the crowd, that's what they want. If you set a height limit, we might double, triple the turbines. I don't think anybody wants that. But you're gonna have more noise, potentially.
Then we shouldn't be doing this at all, but I thought we addressed that.
I mean, as far as the newer turbines are more efficient, the taller ones could produce, I think the same one that just got completed in Beale City is about six hundred feet. I think they're two point eight megawatts. The new ones that they come out, I think GE just came out with, are six hundred and seventy-five, at close to six megawatts. So that same project that they just did could have been half the, half the turbines.
You think that's gonna...
For the same power, I would think that would be a benefit. And I guess that's what we get away, you know, obviously if they're taller, you're gonna see them, but if there's less of them, I think more people would be happy that way.
I think the developers are gonna do what they want to do with whatever they're, they're given and they're dealt.
And why do you care how much power?
As many as they can of any size.
Ma'am, I've heard enough. You wanna leave? This is a discussion amongst this group. You can go home too, sir. Well, go home. Mr. Berry, please escort this guy. We're trying to get something done here. Mr. Berry, please escort this guy, we're trying to get something done here.
I think we've lost track a little bit, so let's try to, you know, I think we had the public hearing, we had a public comment, everybody's gonna disagree, we understand, or I think the planning commission does understand. You know, there's gonna be policy dis- uh, disagreements, and there's going to be people who would be unhappy with any turbines in, in the township. There would be people unhappy if you have a restrictive ordinance, there will be people unhappy if you're a certain setback from the lake, if you're not a certain setback from the lake. Um, the goal right now is, for whatever, for, better for worse, depending on where you sit, for the planning commission to hopefully. Pass a recommended ordinance, or decide to continue and, and work on, on the ordinance longer. Um, but I think we have to let them work, the, the audience has to let them work, and if you could try your best to not, to not engage, because, you know, candidly, I don't think, it, it probably doesn't help with them, you know. Wanting, especially if, if there's policy disagreements, with them going towards your viewpoint, if, if you're gonna interrupt them, and, and I think that's, that's the best, so I don't think we need to, um, you know, necessarily. Hopefully everybody can just, you know, be respectful, you all know that there's a method of, if you're unsatisfied with an ordinance, of, of how the, how they handle it. You know, there's at least two review periods for any potential ordinance that would be voted by the planning commission, or recommended by the planning commission, at the county planning commission, and at the township board level, and then ultimately, a direct democracy component. So, um, it's unfortunate that this is a. Well, it would be, it would be a little bit easier to do that if people want to interrupt people when they're speaking, so that's, that's part of it. So please, let's, let's just have them vote, and for, do whatever they, they, they want to discuss and deliberate, and, um, if you disagree, you know, there's processes to, to work that out, other than, uh, interrupt. And, and it go, it go, okay?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for clarifying that, now we know, thank you for the clout show, Chris.
So John, when, uh, you know, we all took an oath to take on this, uh, position on the planning. And part of that oath was to promise that we were gonna do it for the township, not for ourselves. And i- it doesn't feel like all of us are really setting our personal desires aside, and doing it for this township. And doing it in a way that's taking, adhering to everybody, and balancing the pros, the cons, the people are for, the people are against. And I've been trying to say that, you know what?